I think we can call this meeting to order. And we do have a forum tonight with Richard, myself, and Joe here. So we can open the meeting of the June 21th zoning board of appeals for Reinbeck. We have a number of things on the agenda tonight. And I think the first is to approve the minutes for the May ZBAA meeting. Richard, I know you weren't here.
Right.
The only thing I noticed...
Yeah, fine to me.
They looked fine to Joe. The only thing I noticed was Joe did raise his hand for the Kaplan resolution.
Okay.
So I think with that amendment, I move that we accept the meeting. And Joe, you agree?
Second.
Okay. All right. So I think we've approved the minutes for the May meeting. We don't have any...
Richard, would you feel comfortable voting on the minutes? Because we'll need a majority, so we would need you to vote. Or we can push that off to August when it's coming out.
Well, it's just that I wasn't here.
Yeah, so would you rather us... Maybe we won't approve the minutes. Because if Richard wasn't here to vote on them, we wouldn't have enough to make...
Probably that change and set it up.
Yeah, that would be good. So we'll make the change that you suggested about with Joe and Joe on there. And then we'll move that to be approved for the next meeting.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you. So we have three new projects that we'll look at tonight. Let me just check and see if we have someone here for each of them. For Allison and Jason Bell?
Yeah.
Okay, great. For Brian Williams? Great. And for Optum?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll give the same kind of introductory spiel to all of you. Your job tonight is to take us through the application so that we understand exactly what you're asking for, and to go through the supporting material that you have so that we can evaluate that. What we really want to do tonight is just accept the application or give you guidance as to what's missing. We may ask for additional material. We may decide that the application is fairly complete and decide to accept it, but ask for additional material. And we'll give a timeline for when that material needs to be in. And if we don't get that material, then it would delay things. But so really tonight, we're just looking for you to come up and tell us what you're asking for. And then we'll have questions and go from there. So Allison and Jason? So if you could just take us through what you'd like to do?
Sure. So we have a... We would like to do a farm-style fence in the front of our property. It is set back 20 feet from the road. So it would allow for the passage of views. It's not a solid fence. It's not a privacy fence. We're looking to have five-foot, 11-inch posts, which you could see are in place. The plan is for three boards or slats between posts with some kind of wire backing to be determined material-wise. Eventually, there will be a gate across the driveway to enclose the front part of the property. So the idea is more for safety, less for privacy, obviously.
And the zoning requirement is four feet, is that right?
Yeah. So the fence requirement is that if it's in the front setback, it needs to be... The height maximum is four feet. And so they're asking for a variance for one foot and 11 inches.
Okay. And this will just be all along the front alone?
Correct. Yes, just in the front of the property.
Okay.
Are the trees... Are these trees, I'm assuming, are already there?
Yes.
And are they going to be in front?
In front of the fence. Yes.
Are they going to grow any taller?
They will grow taller, but there's a maximum to them. So they top out.
I was just curious.
Yeah. At a much shorter height than the surrounding evergreens.
What kind of evergreens are those?
On the side of the house? To be honest, I'm not sure. The existing evergreens, there's an evergreen path on the right side of our property, if we're looking at the front of the house, and then along the backside of the property.
And what are these that you planted in front?
These are junipers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they are bookended by pine trees on either end.
Okay.
So we've got six junipers, two pine.
Is it going to be that kind of color?
No, that is just the bright material that I used.
What color would you use?
Lightly wood, some kind of treated wood.
You had mentioned that you had seen some similar-sized fences.
Yes.
I know one thing that the zoning board usually looks for is kind of like how it kind of works with the neighborhood. Would you mind taking pictures of like the nearby fences that you had seen?
Yeah, absolutely. There's one down the road, Buttonwood Farm is one. Their fence is black, but the idea is the same. And the other local example that we drew from was the Holly Bush Farm on Violet Hill. They're on the left there if you're coming down toward the town of Reinbeck.
Yeah, if you could send a photograph of both of those to Gretchen.
Sure.
Are they also five feet 11 or are they four feet?
I couldn't tell you.
You're saying it's basically for safety?
It is. It's for safety. We have a high volume of traffic. Obviously, 9G is high volume of traffic. But we have a high volume of trespassing traffic that comes from 9G coming south. They're looking, we believe, for Slate Glory and Bull's Head Road. So they use our driveway as a turnaround, both at the bottom and they come speeding to the top of the driveway, I think in a rush to leave the property. So we've had a couple of instances where they've come all the way up and they're not paying attention to our child and our animal. We've also... We had an accident occur in the front of the house a couple of years ago. And the force of that collision caused one of the cars to come onto our property, onto our mailbox, and into past where this tree line is. So for those reasons, we really wanted some kind of deterrent visually, hopefully to help both us and our child, but also with the passing traffic. Because the turnaround traffic, it causes issues with the passing traffic as well. So there's a high volume of horn glaring that takes place. The turnarounds are being done at like a three-point turn at times, or at times they just back right out into the roadway. And when you're coming north on 9G, it's out of fence. So the traffic doesn't always have adequate time to prepare and stop. So we're hoping visually to eliminate the appeal to turnaround in the driveway. And also to keep our child's toys and our son from going into the roadway as well. So it's sort of a dual purpose for us.
Are you going to put... Is this going to just be open or are you going to put a gate up?
There will eventually be a gate. Materials to be determined. It will likely be the same materials as the fence with the boards and posts.
And how far does that go into the driveway?
Um...
Because the fence itself is 20 feet and then that goes on?
It is. I believe it's written on the survey map. Forgive my ignorance. I'm not sure. I think it was my memory.
Oh, 16? 16, yeah.
You said the fence itself is 20 feet back from the...
It is. Yeah. From the road.
And you just think a four-foot fence would not be visible?
Um, we believe that as much of a visual deterrent as we can have is what our aim is. Because the tree line that we implemented, we hoped would serve that purpose before we had our son. And unfortunately, it's not seeming to be sufficient enough to deter the upcoming traffic. Because when the tree line was not there, it was just a very flat expanse where the cars, I think, had enough time to discern that it was an appealing enough spot to turn around.
Okay. Any other questions?
Without seeing the actual fence or the door, the gate, will they have to come back? To approve a gate? Or should that be part of this as well?
Well, so the variance is because it's four feet. Let's see how it's sort of...
It's really for the height.
It's, yeah. If it's within 50... So you said it was 16 feet. But it can't be right because it's more than...
Five feet 11.
No. Oh, six... So it would be, I guess, 20 plus 16, so 36. All right.
I believe that it is 16 feet from the corner post to the end post where the gate would connect.
Right, right. So if the corner post is at 20 feet and then for 16.
Correct, yes.
So it says here under the zoning code that it should not exceed four feet of height when erected with a distance to the front lot wanting to go to the highway right away. Do you think you'd know if you would be getting a gate? I know you said you weren't...
It's a highway, big guy.
Okay. Do you have any plans for it now?
Um...
The plan was really we were going to do the same materials as the three slats from that floor, just to continue the same aesthetic look and not have something juicer. As it was going to be anything different, it was going to be more like a cattle gate that you see somewhere. We were really trying to go open and carry fence to the best of our abilities and just some netting behind it to catch little one, really to go with the farm motif that is up and down 9G. But due to the road intersection of the street of Bull's Head, the turnaround traffic has become nightmarish. And those trees that we were hoping did not grow best enough and will not deter or stop. But definitely won't. This little guy can go in that way. Where if I continued with the fencing, yes, we'll be able to help corral him from immediately going. It's just we've got 75 miles an hour. There's no... There's nothing that stops it. So the most that we can do with this situation, we would really like... We wanted to do a wall and other things, and cost would not allow. So we really tried to go with something that we saw right up the street. A handful of different directions. Violet Hill, up 9G. All very similar type construction. We were just hoping to get a little taller to deter from some of the turnaround. It's not even going to be that visible behind the junipers that are hoping to fill in.
Yeah, I think what Richard's pointed is that if you wanted to probably have a gate, it might be good to consider that now. So that you're kind of making a one-stop shop. It's also better for the board to be able to kind of evaluate what the final product...
I believe it's on the building itself right now and that the variance that we were looking for was the height. The gate itself wasn't going to be any larger or smaller than the height that would be.
I think what... No, I understand. I think like in your renderings here, if you could like... If you wanted to consider putting a gate in, if you could kind of include that.
Oh, in the renderings. I understand, ma'am.
Yeah, we understand what the variance is. And the reason that we're asking is that way you don't have to come back in front of the variance in case you're adding like this extra portion.
Can we really just close it off? If we looked at the map, it was going to be the three... I don't believe that I could get a 14 footer to go on one hinge. So I believe it was going to be the same three rails of fence that I would have then split. So it's going to be made up of the same materials to make it look like...
Okay, well, that's different.
Yeah, like it really will be. I'm not trying to do anything more than make it really look... And only from carpenter buddies, they're telling me to... If I started it high, that I'd be able to keep the slats up instead of having them go with the contour of the yard itself. It'd actually be more of a sleazy motif as you're driving by. Just seem more of a level, a straight line, which we then apply to the gate, which would be made up of it. It's just going to be an inch material. Same thing, but it'll look very similar to what was rendered.
Do you think maybe if you could provide us with like a rendering as to what the gate could look like?
Sure. That'd be helpful. I provided an example of a metal gate. But if you're looking for something more along the lines of the same materials, we can see.
Yeah, what you're proposing to do, I think would be helpful.
Yeah. And that we can see that it's going to be back, you know, on that where the fence comes.
Okay.
Okay. Sure.
Good.
I think that would be very helpful.
And then the nearby...
Yes, sure.
I think that would be efficient and convenient.
So I think with those additions, I feel like we can accept this application.
Yes, I agree.
Now, do I have to make a motion? So make a motion that we accept the application with the additional materials that will be sent to Gretchen? And if possible, within two weeks so that they're there.
Yes. Is that what you asked for, Gretchen? Two weeks or one week? I can't remember.
Two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay.
I second that motion.
And a...
Roll for vote. Joe?
I'm Joe, yeah.
Yes? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait. I have to ask you...
So the next public hearing would be July...
July 19th.
July 19th? So at the public hearing, what typically... You know, you kind of give the same introduction and then if... We'll send out... You'll send out notices to your nearby neighbors and then they can provide comments if they want to do that. So we usually just ask if you're available for July 19?
Sure, absolutely.
And you'll just have to go through the same thing, the same materials. And if someone's here from the public, they can have questions. If they're not, you'll still go through it.
Sure.
And we'll make sure that you send in that extra additional material.
Absolutely.
And Gretchen will provide you with information for Monday.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you so much.
And so we just have a few little housekeeping things. So for SEAKER, which is the environmental review process, this is really a type 2 action under 617.512, which is construction of a fence. So it should be a type 2 action. So you want to just make a motion for that?
I make a motion that we characterize this as a type 2 action for SEAKER?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then it should just be referred to the Reinbeck Planning Board. No other referrals are needed. So Gretchen will do that for us.
Okay.
And that should be it. You guys usually do site visits after the public hearing?
Yeah, we will do a site visit, I think, for all of these. And we usually do that after the public hearing so that if there's any comments from the public, we can take that into consideration when we go visit. So we'll arrange that with you after we do the next one.
Okay. Now you're all there.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your cake.
Bye-bye. Bye. Okay. Brian Williams is up next.
Hi, Brian. Did you guys ask questions or I...
So do you want to just start by explaining what your project is?
I'm trying to put a shed roof over the front door area of the house. I should have put this in the application when I bought the house. I moved a deck that was much bigger in the front. Then what I'm looking to do now is closer to the road. But I didn't think of this day then. I had to take it off because the house was broad because there's a valley there. And the water just barrages that corner of the house. So I had to replace the sill. And I do most of the work myself. So I want to create a roof that deflects a lot of the water, gives me some cover from the front door. And right now, the front door is just sort of... It's hard to tell on that scale, but you can tell. It's in the little L there. And you don't know there's a front door. There's nothing to draw on the front door. So by putting the shed roof over the top, I'm going to accomplish two things. Be able to put a little bit of, you know, your eyeballs on the front door. But more importantly to me, take care of some of the water, some of the...
So would the roof just kind of extend just straight?
Yeah, I think you have some type of sketch of it.
Yeah.
I think you have a rendering of it as well.
Oh, this, thank you.
Yeah. So there you see it.
This is what the end product will look like?
That's what the end product will look like.
Okay.
So it comes out, interestingly enough, the town moved the road closer to the house and that's why I'm too close. So the road has navigated its way in off the survey maps. So I just fall into where I have to come get a variance. So I think that that shed roof is proposed to come out about three and a half feet closer to the road than the existing house at its furthest point. And that three and a half feet is solely to allow... It might be for allow enough room for the sidewalk to come in on the side as you walk up from the driveway. So that's it. I could probably tuck it back, but I don't think I would break it.
I mean, the shed roof from there, it's wider than the roof.
No.
I don't quite get that yet.
So this is the corner of the shed roof.
Yeah. And then where does it go?
That's the roof, right there.
And then, but the shed goes from that point where your finger was to the left?
From here to there.
Uh-huh.
Right there. So there's your front door, right there.
Uh-huh.
So the sidewalk would come in. You can just see the corner of it in the rendering right there. Come in right there.
The shed roof comes out three and a half or four feet beyond...
Beyond the profile of the corner of the roof right here.
Okay.
Where that valley ends, it comes out. So 16 inches or so of that is going to be the overhang, the gutter overhang over the ledgerboard.
And it's a different pitch than the rest of your house?
Yeah, it's going to be a slightly flatter pitch, yeah.
Right. Is that metal?
The roof is metal. It will be have a metal roof. And it should look nice. It's going to be a cedar post on it. So it's pretty much a gray and black house. Ironically, I should have a nicer picture than that, but it's gray and black. So the picture is sort of right there. Yeah. That's the extent of what I want.
So is the... Does it go... So it goes out... Oh, I see. So it's just like a...
It's got three posts out there.
Yeah. So like the porch is here and it goes a little bit beyond the porch? Like it hangs over a little bit beyond?
Right.
How far?
There'll be some stone. It'll be stone on the round underneath it. So two steps up into the front door. There used to be an elevated deck there with a wheelchair ramp that went all the way out. I didn't think to take pictures of it thinking I'd ever be here. But, you know, that's how it goes, right?
How far does it come from the back face, the back wall? So it's going to come out about six feet or so? Because it's...
I'm going to say from the back. It's been a while since about eight and a half feet.
Eight and a half feet, okay.
Because you got that little bump that barely fits in the 32-inch front door.
Yeah.
Right? And so by the time you're done with the overhang... It doesn't come out much, but it would look wrong to run it even just to not get a variance.
Right, right. Yeah, I agree. Yeah. The only thing... One of the only things that we would ask is that whatever the measurements are, that they should be exact.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
As long as I know I can do it, then I'll do the next level of, you know, what... That exact measurement.
Yeah.
I have them somewhere, but it's been a while.
Yeah, because that will be written into the resolution.
Sure. I can do it, yeah.
Do you have a question on this one?
No.
I would just... You said you have a color picture of this?
I do.
Would you mind... Just it might be a little easier to kind of see or however you...
Do I have to do it all? What was it, eight copies? Or can I just send it digitally?
Just electronically.
Yeah, just electronically.
Electronically, yeah.
Okay.
And a hard copy for the tile install anywhere, actually.
So there's one hard copy and then electronic?
Okay.
And would the board want to see kind of maybe what it looks like? Because I think we're having trouble maybe with the dimensions of it.
Don't you have a side view? I think you have...
Is this it? This is the only side view I have.
Oh, probably it's too dark here. Contrast, isn't there? So you can see, you can't see it?
Oh, I see. I got it, okay. I wasn't sure whether I...
Yeah, it's horrible with black and white here.
Yeah. Well, maybe just a color pic, you know, like...
Yeah. So you can see the sidewalk coming up. There would be a post right there.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, that doesn't translate well, does it?
That's why I was looking at this. I'm like, what am I looking at?
I could scan it because it looked a lot better in, I think... That looks like a sidewalk in nowhere.
Yeah, that's why I... So maybe just a colored picture?
I'll do a colored picture from the front and the side.
I guess perhaps maybe if you send it through email, the color will be able to... Because I think the town has a... Maybe this was the town scanner or...
They scanned it black and white, then we had to see it.
And we can scan color too, though, so.
And the other thing that we... Sometimes it's helpful for the board is if... So we have the after pictures that you provided. If you could provide us with what your house currently looks like?
Sure.
That would just maybe be helpful to kind of see a before and after. I have a picture. This is just from Google Earth.
Oh, so you have the old deck?
Oh.
The one I removed?
Oh.
Yeah, that was a lot bigger than when I'm... You know, comes to the road a lot closer.
So is this the front of the house there?
That's back in the day before...
Yeah, this is just off Google Earth.
About what time... About when I bought it, that house, about a half a month or so. You say you've seen the house?
Yeah, I live about Winston and I've passed by there.
Oh, you must go pass over.
Yeah, yeah.
So you see my forever project I'm doing?
I've already been doing it for a while, that's for sure.
Is this structural? Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's... I think one of the issues that presented it was because this is actually a non-conforming structure because it was existing prior to the zoning law. And so that's why it's within the setback already. But because you're adding closer to the road, that's why you... Then you have a little variance here.
But has this already been added?
What's that?
Is the roof currently added?
No, it's not added.
This is computer-generated, what we see.
Yes. Oh, it's... When I give you the color, I can't believe it. I was telling Gretchen, I mean, they could totally fake a house now. Like it's scary.
I thought this was what was there. But...
I appreciate you playing along the shrubs, too.
You're a good rendering.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions.
No.
We would like to see these in color.
Sure.
And then just confirm the measurements.
The dimensions.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because if it's five-point something or whatever, you know...
Yeah.
Okay, then I make a motion to accept this application dependent on getting the additional material from you, the color renderings and the measurements confirmed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Joe? Okay, so everybody agreed? Joe, yes?
All in favor.
Yeah, all in favor. Aye.
We're all set?
Okay. Uh, yeah, we, uh, we'll be scheduled in public hearing, are you able to come on July 19?
I, I believe I can. Can I send somebody else if I can, or does it have to be me?
Nope, it, it can be someone else, we would just ask...
That's part of the, you know, part of the process, yeah.
Yeah, there's a little authorization form that you can fill out, it just says so-and-so will be here on my behalf, you can give that to Gretchen before the meeting.
All right, I believe I'll be here then. It's my sister's birthday, twins, so...
You can bring her here.
I'll celebrate here.
We'll have a birthday.
I'll, I'll ask them to come here in lieu of me.
Yeah.
I have a surprise for you.
Uh, so I guess Gretchen, so I say, mentioned to the, um, the bells that Gretchen will talk to you about sending out the public hearing notices and all that information.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Uh, so for Seeker, this is also, I would recommend to be a type two action under seventeen point five C-16, which is granting of an individual setback or lot line variance or adjustment.
Uh, so I make a motion that we determined that this is a type two action in this interim.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm determined seconding.
And, uh, the only, again, it's just to the Rindick Planning Board for reborers.
Okay.
And you guys can discuss site visits after the public hearing.
Yeah, Cab, I know you guys don't necessarily directly go to Cab, but I'll, I'll deal with the, I'll call the Cab guys.
Yeah, for the Cab, so with the Conservation Advisory Board, it's really, for variances, it's really only if there's like development in open space, I've always kind of interpreted that, there's like a new development, big field, or, you know, something where a lot of this, and WAC is not of the LWRP, so...
Next up, Optum.
Good evening. My name is Ed Seimwester, I'm with Simeon Network. We are representing Optum as their sign language manufacturer for this location. They are taking over the Caremark medical center, so there is a name change involved. And what Optum is looking for is a variance to replace like the like, the face on the existing monument sign. It would be the same size as the existing, but my understanding is that the code has changed since the original was put in place, and basically in half, a twelve square foot for both panels, as compared to the existing twenty-four they have right now for Caremark. So this is the monument sign there, they're looking at replacing the top panel. And it's literally like, like, they are not changing the sizes, it'll be the same manufacturing methods, materials, just changing the...
Um, is there also, uh, I was reading for the determination letter, and it said that there was also, um, door signs?
It looks like they were adding vinyl to the front doors, I don't have that information. My understanding was, was strictly for the monument for this meeting, but we can absolutely get you that information should you need it.
This was a determination letter, and it had noted that there were three variances that were needed, uh, one for the, the surface area, which you mentioned, the eleven point two, and then it said, uh, two door signs, and then the combined surface area of the freestanding sign and the door signs, but...
I think with the addition of the vinyl, they're looking for the doors, plus the additional twelve square foot they're looking for in the monument, that's what's going to come over, the combined.
So what, what does the, is it like an identity sign on one?
Correct, so it would just be vinyl across the entrance doors, so that people understand that those are the entrance doors to the facility.
So we would need some illustrations?
Correct.
Of that?
Yeah.
I'm surprised that they haven't submitted those already, but I will check with the office and make sure they're sent in.
Yeah, because even the, um, the variance application was just, just for the monument sign, so...
So the application would need to be amended, Joe?
I would, yeah, I would just amend, so, um, I'll just show you that the... Yeah, because they just, they just mentioned the, the twelve foot sign. So I think we would need, uh, pictures of the identity sign as well, and then if you could just, you know, amend the application, you don't need to submit anyone, just add a amendment to it, just saying that you need the additional signs for the determination.
Understood.
And the, the exact measurements of those, the exact measurements?
Of the door valve, yes.
Yeah. Again, so that we have the right totals, adding up.
Yeah.
Do you want copies of this, or do you want to do electronically, no stickable copies to the file and to the renderings and the updated application?
I'm fine with this, like, with whatever.
Yeah. I was just thinking, since there's this addition, I think if we could have copies for all signs of feeling, Scott may want his copy stored in his basement.
So I would recommend that we don't accept this as complete until we get those additional renderings.
And so then we wouldn't have a public hearing on it?
Right.
Yeah.
Let's not schedule a public hearing for that yet.
I, I think that's fine. So we'll look for you to come back next month with the additional information, uh, the visuals and the, um, measurements for everything, and then we can accept the application and move on from there.
And that would be July 19th as well?
Yes.
Will, will we be back on the other, in the town hall?
Yeah, as far as I know.
Yeah, that's a good point, that, uh, next month we'll be at the original, at our normal location, just, just across the street. Okay?
Good.
Okay, sorry about that, but...
No, that's okay. Thank you very much for your time.
So now, we would, um, do I make a motion to open the public hearings? I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on the Kaplan application, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do you want to start, or should I?
Go ahead, didn't you do a site visit recently?
Yeah, there was a, there was a planning...
Yeah, that's the EBA site.
So this, this, uh, this is a rendering of the tennis court that you guys requested last time. The, um, it's taken from above, so it's actually a sports court, so there's tennis, pickleball, and a basketball court at the far end. The fence is eight feet, three inches high, the frame of it is cedar, and it's stained a kind of dark, almost black color called dragon's blood. And the, the mesh in the fence is black woven wire mesh, so the idea is that it's as invisible as possible. The color of the sports court is dark green, um, that's, we found that to be the color that sort of blends most seamlessly with the meadow grass around the court. Um, the lines are white, the pickleball lines are yellow, and it's a one-color court. So, um, I can show you, if we want to go into, this was, this is new to you, there's, there's other documents that were presented before? You want to call them up?
Do you want me to start from the here?
Uh, okay, yeah, I'll actually, you don't have your laser, do you?
I do, I'm kind of just combing it.
So the site is seventy-three acres, this is Salisbury Turnpike in the front. The, the site is about eighty percent woodland and about twenty percent clear. The house is kind of right at the top of the existing clearing, and the proposed location for the new sports court is where the red dot is. There is a line of woods that separates the two meadows that runs through here, those are existing woods. Um, and there's also another line of woods here, kind of right along Salisbury Turnpike. But our idea, there, there was, so the variance we're requesting is to put the sports court, which is an accessory front structure between the principal residence and the fronting road. And the reason for this is that really there's extensive wetlands through here and woodlands all through here, and if we were to put it behind the house, it would require extensive clearings of woodlands, et cetera. And this location sort of seems to be the location that was both screened from the street and also the most compatible with preserving the existing woodlands. And there's a whole forestry program, um, for, for the existing woodlands that's registered. And there are documents that actually just went to Gretchen about that. So, next slide. So imagine this whole thing rotated, so here's...
Which way, I can rotate if you...
Oh, no, we're good.
Okay.
Here's Salisbury Turnpike here, here's the house up here and the pool, this is the sports court, and this is the kind of existing line of trees now. Our proposal is to, you know, put the sports court in here, and then, uh, yeah, this shows you a little better, so the house is here, and it's just, there's just, this is a pool. All of the house, pool, septic, all of that has already been permitted. The sports court is the only part of this job that does not have a building permit at this point. So essentially the line of the existing woodland is kind of like this, and this is the hundred-foot setback for the wetland area. So there, there really just isn't room to put the sports court behind the house. So that's the general justification of the location that it's going. And these are new pine trees that we're proposing along Salisbury Turnpike that will screen the, right now there's a line of deciduous trees, including a lot of ashes that we're probably going to use, lose. So we thought that this additional line of pines would, um, help do that. And when I, we did the walkthrough with, um, planning, they are, they were concerned about deer browse, you know, up to like sort of chest height how white pines get. So we're actually going to supplement this with a row of forsythia, on the assumption that we're going to lose the ashes, the pines will get deer browsed, and the forsythia is dense enough that even in the winter, it's kind of twiggy enough that it will, it will screen from the row. And, uh, we do have a rendering of the whole, um, why don't we, why don't we go to the next slide, I'll just kind of walk you through.
Sure.
So this is the grading drawing, I don't know if you guys were concerned that this planning was a little bit, or the drainage drawing about how this all works, but essentially we're like draining water off the sports court and then into two culverts that daylight on the property, hundreds of feet away from the property line, so that shouldn't be an issue. Um, next, this is just to give the dimensions of it. Oh, and this sort of shows a diagram of the fence. So there's a high section of fence around the back, low sections of fence on the sides, and then there's no gate, there's just sort of an opening to get into the, so this is all where the playfield is.
And is the high fences, that's what's facing the road, or?
Yes, the high fence faces the road, yes.
Is that, is that why it's a hydro fence, or is that behind the basketball?
It's behind the basketball and the tennis.
It is.
Yeah, it's basically so you, you know, there's only so many balls you can chase in the field.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, so essentially the high fence kind of runs here and here.
Is there going to be like significant, it looks like a fair amount of grading to do?
There is quite a bit of grading to do, yeah. Actually, the next plan is the grading plan. Yeah, so essentially we're going to need to sort of flatten this area, and the kind of zero line to the grading is this contour that kind of runs straight, right through the middle of the thing. So we're going to need to kind of like dig up into the hill a little bit, and then push the grade out in this direction a little bit. This is the existing forest line here, um, and then, so how the drainage is going to work is any water coming down this hill will be caught in this swale and directed around the outsides of the court, and then any water that pitches off the court will be picked up in a curtain drain that runs around here and then is directed into the swale and culvert system there.
It's going to be asphalt?
It's asphalt with then, um, lucco, that's the name of the band, I can remember. It's like one of those kind of nice, kind of cushy surfaces a little bit, yes, or asphalt. Uh, these are elevations of the fence, so there's the high section, eight, three, and the low section, which is four, three. So, but the idea is that there's a cedar frame with a well-widely wire, black mesh in there. So this is a rendering from the road, so this, this photo was taken in January, so this is the house under construction, it's a little further along right now. The sports court location is right in there. The next slide shows it with the court, so you can see the fence from the road. Then the next one is, you know, with these pine screening trees, and then, you know, there'll be an additional layer of forsythia in front of the ponds. It's pretty effectively screened from the road, even in January. At least some of the year you can't, you can't see it at all.
Yeah.
So... Right, I think that's, that's, that's what I've got to say. Andrew, do you have anything?
Of course.
There you go.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. I'm not sure when they have to use this nearly as much as Tyler did. He's given you all, uh, a very good overview, of course, of what's being proposed here. So obviously Planning Board, we're in front of as well, and as Tyler has mentioned, uh, they've, they've had a few helpful suggestions we're incorporating right now. Uh, the reason, of course, we're here tonight, uh, and in front of the zoning board of the POC here is, of course, the town's law says that you cannot put a structure, uh, that's, you know, pertinent to the, to the residents in the front yard. So technically, uh, even though it's a seventy-three acre piece of property, this is in the front yard, as Tyler mentioned, it's going to be between the principal residence and the street, but of course, there's a big difference, uh, between a, a nice house here in the village, trying to put a tennis court in front of that, and trying to put, uh, this here about seven hundred and fifty feet back from Salisbury Turnpike, uh, as you saw in the, uh, seven hundred and forty-five feet and six inches, stand corrected, um, with a, you know, uh, some topography naturally screening it already, the two lines of trees already there, and the additional trees and shrubs that are going to be added. So, um, we, we hope, of course, that the ZBA agrees, it's not going to be a, a large imposition on the neighborhood, of course, as you can see, too, it's basically as well centered on the property as possible, very far from any, uh, property lines as well. Uh, there are no lights that are going to be proposed as part of this as well, there's no light pollution going into the, uh, uh, any of the neighboring, uh, uh, properties either, this will be something used in the sunshine essentially, and, uh, just enjoyed by the residents there. So we feel it's basically been proposed to be as, as innocuous as possible here, and it preserves the, the natural beauty of the, of the area, the property itself and the surrounding area as much as possible. And, uh, I, I've not really appeared in front of this board too much before, but I was instructed to bring all of our affidavits and everything tonight, so I'm not sure if you want that now, or I can just give it to you at the end of the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Did the, the planning board make any changes to the design that would impact what it looks like for the, for the sports consideration?
Not to the court, they're only, not to the court itself, the only change was the line of shrubs along Salisbury Turnpike.
That's with the forsythias?
Yeah, the forsythia, yeah, yeah.
Uh, that might be helpful if you could provide a copy of, do you have any renderings with that?
I don't, I don't, but I could, uh, yeah, we could, we could supplement, sure.
Yeah, that might be helpful for the board's consideration, I would think.
Sure.
We'll also do a site visit, and is the proposed area staked out?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Great. The planning board, I think, just did a site visit with Tyler last week, and that's where the idea for the forsythia came.
Yeah, it was just last Friday, so...
And, uh, would we organize that through one of you?
Uh, yeah, yeah, just, uh, yeah, just reach out to me, like, when would be a good time for you?
Okay. So I think, uh, we'll wait till Scott gets back, I'm sure he...
We'll see, yeah.
Want to see this?
Hi.
And Catherine, just, uh, so at the last meeting, uh, we had asked if, if the applicant could confirm where, what the distance of the house was from the road, and they did. So, so, um, the distance to the court is, uh, seven hundred and forty-five, and the distance from the house is, uh, one thousand, one ninety-five feet. So that's from the, where the house is to Salisbury Turnpike.
Yeah, I think it's actually shown on the drawing, if you just can pull the drawing up a little bit on the screen? Oh, no, it's not on that drawing, okay. Yeah, there's another, there's an updated drawing that has it, but, yeah, that input is correct.
Oh, yeah, I really think so.
It's like a thousand something, yeah.
So the variance is really from the...
So the variance is really from the, where the court...
Closest point to the court.
Yeah, the court...
To the front of the house.
To the front of the house.
Yeah.
So it was, uh, four hundred and fifty feet.
Point three.
Point three, yeah.
I don't think I have any other questions.
No?
Anything, Joe?
Is there anybody from the public here for this? See anybody? Okay.
So, uh, you can close the public hearing?
Yes, so I, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. So, uh, we'll get in contact to see about a site visit. It's probably going to be on the weekend because, um, one of us still works, uh, reminds us of that all the time. And, uh, but we'll probably do that within the next couple of weeks, so, and then we will, should have a resolution as well.
Yeah, so, uh, as you know, you know, we have, we have fixed it to... Yeah, so as you know, you know, we have 62... The board has 62 days to issue a decision. Typically, we try to do that at the next meeting. So we'll have a should have a resolution for you.
So that that is July...
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. Right, and for me, you want the forsythia added to the red...
If it's possible, just just gives us gives the board a bit of a, you know, more accurate view as to what's anticipated.
All right. Do you want to still track the next one?
Yeah, I think...
Do Julie's one?
Yeah, look, thank you.
And one more's happy for the five.
So there's no other housekeeping in this one, is there?
Nope. Oh, we got a referral back from the planning board, which had said that they raised no issues. And they thought that because the location was... The port was over 745 feet from the property lines, they didn't see any any issues. So just rely on ZBA can rely on their own determinations. And we sent it out to CAB, but we did not get back yet.
I think they're waiting for me to get involved.
What was the first one they got?
There was no problems with it?
Yeah, from the...
Oh, from the... Oh, sorry. No, from the town, town Reinbeck Planning Board. Yep, this didn't have to go to county planning.
I didn't think so.
Yes.
But it's CAB?
It's the Conservation Advisory Board.
All right. I'm on that, too, when we look at invite them about historical issues like that.
Good?
I think it's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you know that bridge that was... That house by the Biggorrelli section, all that forsythia there? Great barrier.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it will do a good job there. Couple neighbors have those bushes and they get pretty heavy, pretty thick.
They're pretty hard to get rid of. But you get it.
Never played them.
Now, Catherine.
So for Catherine Whitman, we had spoken back in March. And Catherine had asked us to propose a resumption once the resolution is issued. There's a year period. And I think you were still waiting on the board of health. And you just got that a little while ago. So so every so the public hearing was closed. There was a neighbor who had asked... The new neighbor of this property to the south at 14 Old Post Road had wanted the fence to be extended all the way. But the board had the had said that what was, you know, just along the south border would have been proposed. So as a reminder, this had been the four variances that Catherine is asking for was previously approved by the ZBA back in 2021. And it was the house had been demolished. I can actually pull up if you want. The original house had been kind of grandfathered in. So this was a house right here and had been grandfathered in and it had been demolished. So when they were redesigning the house, they wanted to initially shift it about south, about eight feet. And then what the ZBA had granted was a shift four feet. And so this would be the new house. And the variances that are being requested for this application are what had been granted so would the board shift it. And then there's going to be a fence that's along this property line.
The fence in the line of vegetation was right.
Aren't the fence going to a wetland or something?
Yeah, there's a there's a was a wetland buffer that pretty much covered it. And I believe the planning board issued the wetlands permit last night. I think so. They were aware you had a... Catherine had applied for the wetlands permit, so... But it would, yeah, because the way that the with DEC wetlands, there's the wetlands and then there's a 100-foot buffer. And the way that the property was, was that... Yeah, see, here's the the buffer, the 100-foot buffer is actually this line right here. So that's why it was it wasn't this line. It was it was actually it ends up being kind of, you can see it over here, too. So there was no way if with the privacy fence along the border, there was no way to, you know, if it was a little shorter or not, it would have still been the buffer.
So really, tonight, we just need to read the resolution and...
Yeah, so Scott had been Scott did the resolution for ZBA case 1012, which was the previous variance that had been granted. And he's not here, but, you know, I pretty much with working with Scott, we I pretty much just added some procedural history for this application. But the rationale is the same, with the exception that I stated that the board is not going to require the extension of the fence around the entire property. I'll pull that up.
Is Scott still on the board?
Yes, because he's just not here, on vacation. I don't believe that.
So I don't have a printout of the resolution? So I can read from that?
Yes, can you read it over here? Or do you want me to read it?
I believe so.
Huh? Oh, do you have a printout?
No, thank you.
That way I can face toward the mic a little bit more.
That's the long piece of...
If I get tired during the middle of this, I may switch over to you, Karen.
Sure.
Resolution of the Town of Reinbeck Zoning Board of Appeals in the matter of the area variances, application of Catherine Whitman, AIALEEDAP, ZBA case number 1036. Background: The applicant is Catherine Whitman. She is the owner of the property and is representing herself. Property involved: This appeal involves property located at 16 Old Post Road, Reinbeck, New York, in the town of Reinbeck, and which bears the tax parcel number 617001378726. The applicant's property is .382 acres in the area and is located in the RA10 zoning district. Description of the proposed project: The applicant seeks to construct a new single-family residence. The applicant had previously been granted areas or variances from this board for this project on June 16, 2021, ZBA case 1012. However, the proposed construction did not commence within a year granting such variances and thus the area variances that had been granted became null and void. The applicant has requested the same variances as were granted in ZBA case 1012. A full description of the project as proposed is discussed in ZBA case 1012. As a way of background, the original residents on the property originally predated the zoning law and had been within setbacks. That structure was subsequently demolished. The applicant now wishes to construct a single-family residence. As the pre-existing house was demolished, the new proposed house is no longer grandfathered into the setbacks. And thus, the new proposed house must meet the setback requirements to be in conformity with the zoning law. The applicable sections of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law require 150 front yard setbacks. In addition, 100 feet side yard setbacks are required. And finally, the allowable building coverage must equal 7% of the lot or 1,163 square feet. In ZBA case 1012, this board had granted the following variances: The side yard setback from the north side would be 21 feet 2.5 inches for a variance of variance of 78 feet 9.5 inches. And the side yard setback from the south side would be 27 feet 3 inches for a variance of 72 feet 9 inches. The ZBA hereby grants the requested variance for the front yard setback to be 55 feet 5 inches per a requested variance of 94 feet 7 inches and a variance for the allowable building coverage to be 1,770.75 square feet, requiring a variance of 607.75 square feet. The applicant is requesting the same variances that were granted by the ZBA in ZBA case 1012 for the same proposed construction. Timeliness of appeal: The applicant filed an appeal with this board on November 3, 2022, and has paid the requisite fee. The appeal was filed within 60 days of the date of the CEO's determination letter, which is being appealed, dated October 25, 2022. The application is timely as required pursuant to Section 125.125b of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. The applicant subsequently amended her application on December 5, 2022 to correct the variances being requested to be in conformity with the variances that were granted by the ZBA in ZBA case 1012. This application was accepted by this board on December 21, 2022 and deemed complete. Secra: This application is simultaneously before the Town of Reinbeck Planning Board, who determined that this is a type 2 action at their planning board meeting April 19, 2021. The ZBA accepts this classification of the action as type 2 and no further environmental review is required. Referrals or responses: The application was referred to the Town of Reinbeck Planning Board following the ZBA's acceptance of the application as complete, subject to additional information being provided. The Town of Reinbeck Planning Board responded on February 6, 2023, stating that they saw no significant planning or environmental concerns and recommending that the fence associated landscaping previously required by the ZBA in ZBA case 1012 be considered once again as buffering for the neighbors. The planning board also noted that the fence location would require a wetlands permit as it was located in the wetlands associated with it. The application was referred to the WACCAB as it is on a designated scenic road. The cab responded on January 17, 2023 that since the projects have already been reviewed previously by the ZBA, they had no issue with the application. Public hearing: A public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held at Town Hall on February 15, 2023. Public comment was received by a neighbor, David Weber, residing next door at 14 Old Post Road. Mr. Weber made a request that the privacy fence previously approved in ZBA case 1012 be further extended around the border of the property. The public hearing was closed on February 15, 2023. On March 23, 2023, the applicant requested an extension from the ZBA of preparing a resolution until she could secure approvals from the Duchess County Board of Health to avoid any uncertainty in the time lapse that she could potentially begin construction. Site visit: The ZBA had previously visited the site during its review for ZBA case 1012. The ZBA is familiar with the property from their last review. Findings of fact and conclusions of law: Balancing test: In our review of the variances, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the area variances are granted as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. We determine that the variances requested should be granted because there is no perceived detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of the variances. Consideration of five-factor A balance test: In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by Section 125.124(c)(1) of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law as follows: If the variances are granted, will it cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or cause a detriment to nearby properties? We find the answer to the question is no. The property itself is only .38 acres and it is situated with houses on either side. However, the applicant has supplied a screening and vegetation plan which should effectively screen and provide privacy to both the applicant as well as the neighbor to the south. Although the new resident of Old Post Road had requested the previously approved fence be extended, the ZBA does not find that the additional fencing is required as the previously approved fence had been discussed extensively and will screen the new structure from the neighboring property. Moreover, while the proposed structure is slightly closer to the southern side lot line than the originally constructed house, it is essentially the same size as the house it is replacing, except for a second floor. Given the topography of the lot, the location of the proposed residence is appropriate. In fact, any location of a single-family structure necessitates variances because of the small size of the lot itself. The structure will enhance the neighborhood as it replaces a structure which was in a poor state and repair it ultimately had to be demolished. In addition, the proposed vegetation screening in the front of the property will also shield it from the roadway. While the buildable coverage is increased from the prior structure, it is not so much larger that it will substantially change the character of the neighborhood. Can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variances? We find the answer to this question is no. The applicant, regardless of where they propose to put the structure, would require front yard and side yard setbacks. Simply put, any structure on this substandard lot would require front yard and side yard variances. Is the requested area variance substantial? We find the answer to this question is no. This is a very substandard lot would not allow her to place a single-family structure. The proposed single-family structure is essentially the same footprint as the building it replaces. While the variances on their face may appear at first blush to be numerically substantial, because of the size and nature of the lot, these variances are required or the lot would essentially become unbuildable. The house itself is placed in a logical portion of the lot, given the topography, the shape of the lot, and the locations garage. Will the proposed variances have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no. As mentioned above, the proposed structure is a substantial improvement over the dilapidated structure it replaces. Also, the vegetation and fencing proposed on the south side of the property, as well as the front of the property, will provide for privacy to the applicant, but more importantly, reduce any visual impact in the neighborhood. Overall, the structure will enhance the property and the neighborhood. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant received area variances previously in 2022. However, these variances have lapsed as the construction has not been completed in the required time.
I think it was 2021, right? I think it's... I think it was 10, 20... I think it was 2021. I'll double check just in advance.
And I just I thought there should be a D in the last.
Yep, I got it.
I think you said earlier in there. And when you were here before.
Yes, 2021.
Minimal variance requested: In addition to our review of the five factors and balancing test, we must also determine if this requested variance is the minimum variance necessary and adequate to accomplish what is requested by the applicant. We find the answer to this question is yes. ZBA case 1012 provided further detail regarding the placement of the structure. The area variances granted in ZBA case 1012, which are the same variances requested here by the applicant, demonstrate that the variances as requested here are the minimum variances as necessary to accomplish the proposed structure. Now therefore be it resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows: The ZBA hereby grants the requested variance... The ZVA hereby grants the requested variances, uh, variances for?
I think, that was just a leftover.
Such that, uh, is there something we should take out?
I took out four, so should read. The ZVA hereby grants requested variances such that.
Okay, thank you. The side yard setback from the north side would be twenty-one feet two point five inches for a variance of seventy-eight feet nine point five. The side yard setback from the south side would be twenty-seven feet three inches for a variance of seventy-two feet nine inches. The Z, ZVA hereby grants the requested variance for the front yard setback to be fifty-five feet five inches for a requested variance of ninety-four feet seven inches and a variance for the allow, allowable building coverage to be one thousand seven hundred and seventy point seven five square feet, requiring a variance of six hundred and seven point seven five square feet. As discussed above, given the substandard size of the lot, its configuration, topography, the locations of the new structure is appropriate. In addition, the proposed screening to the south side as well as in front of the structure will minimize any impact on the neighborhood. In order to be crystal clear, the board will allow the placement of the new structure four feet south of the original structure. Accordingly, the variances granted are a front yard setback of fifty-five feet five inches, variance granted of ninety-four feet seven inches, a side yard setback from the north of twenty-one feet two point five inches, variance granted of seventy-eight feet nine point five inches, a side yard setback, uh, from the south side of twenty-seven feet three inches, variance granted seventy-two feet nine inches and an allow, allowable building coverage of one thousand seven hundred and seventy point seven five square feet, variance granted of six hundred and seven point seven five square feet. The granting of the variances is expressly contingent upon the following, on that the construction of a single family residence, residence being conformity with all the plans presented to the board. In particular, the screening to the south and front or west of the building must be built as proposed. If the Planning Board requires additional screening, the ZVA refers to any amendments as may be required of the Planning Board, uh, may be required by the Planning Board during its review. Given the complexity of the history of this application, the latest set of plans shall be attached to this resolution. Section three, the granting of the variances shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Reinbeck for any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application and in full compliance with Article fourteen, fee reimbursement of the Town of Reinbeck zoning law. The grant shall not be deemed valid until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. The granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other limited or required permits and or approvals, including planning board approval and wetland permits. The area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one, within one year of the resolution. Is there any discussion from the, the rest of the board?
Nope.
And I've made some, uh, just minor edits that we, that we caught in there.
Yeah, as we went through it.
Yeah.
And I think you were able to make most of those as we went through them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then, uh, I make the motion that we approve the resolution as read with those minor corrections.
My second.
My second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do, do a roll call now.
Oh, do a roll call to Joe?
Oh.
My son?
Are you approved or in favor?
Yes.
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 Well.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Catherine, for asking a while.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck. Be nice to see a house there. There it is.
Um, we're working on another house, so probably not right away.
But do they have to, does she have to do it within a year?
Within a year, yes.
Starting back.
We already broke ground, I realize, so I could have said before, why am I coming back? We broke ground, but it didn't occur to me because we hadn't poured the foundation.
Right, right.
But we did dig, but, okay.
Well, you're all set.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Night.
Um, so do we have any other business tonight, discussion, anything else that needs to be addressed?
I don't think so, uh, just next, uh, next meeting will be at the Town Hall and I will try to have better management of my technology. This is a new surface and it doesn't, it doesn't accept USB cords, that's why I'm all like.
I, I thought you did great. I was, I'm always so happy that you're able to project these things.
Yeah, I thought it was great.
So I guess I, you make a motion for adjournment?
In favor?
Second?
Second.
Second? Go second, we're all in favor.
We're all in favor.
Okay, great.